Check the other ones should be here, Chair. There was uh. Sanctions or whatever would have doubled the price of them, so we had to order different ones.
Okay, seven o'clock, so we're on call to meeting in total. Any additions to the agenda? If not, somebody wish to move while. Any comments on Miles' motion? We're in now, we'll call question of favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried. Judy's not here tonight, she's on her way to Red Deer for the convention setting tomorrow, so. Council regular meetings on March, September, sorry, on September the ninth minutes. Any questions, errors, missions? Not, somebody wish whoever moves them? Any discussion on Bard's motion? We're in now, call question of those in favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried and asked. Okay, so we've got two delegations, first one is Travel Inc., Tourism Corporation. Kim sent out a link to it, so everybody hopefully had a chance to watch it, but because of her request, we will play it.
Hello everyone, my name is Sheila Wallace, and I want to introduce you to the Traveling on Tourism Cooperative. Now this offers unique opportunities in marketing both tourism and heritage, and it all starts with our business plan. So we were, we are a cooperative, which is an organization that is owned by its members that share similar economic, cultural, or social needs. And in our case, we were federally incorporated in June of 2024. And our purpose is to promote travel, especially in rural Alberta, but also to share the stories of Alberta's heritage, history, and culture. So membership to our cooperative is open to any individual, business, or other entity who is interested in or is a stakeholder in either the heritage or tourism industries. And the cost for a lifetime membership is $25. So another real cool part of a cooperative is that every member has a right to vote. So as decisions come up in this business model, both the operators and those stakeholders in the tourism or heritage industry, as well as the travelers themselves can vote how the business progresses. It's really bringing people together. So as a newly formed cooperative, our business model was created by its founding members, and we have eighteen months to hold our first AGM. So essentially late summer, early fall 2025, various aspects of the business and financials will be put in front of our members, so they can choose how they'd like us to proceed. Our first marketing tool will be a searchable map-based app, formerly known as History Check. Now, this app has already won numerous awards and has been mentioned many times. An example of some of those awards are both the Outstanding Achievement in Heritage Awareness, as well as the Marketing Award in Growing Rural Tourism. Both of those are provincial awards, but the app was also shortlisted for Governor General's Award in Community Programming. Now, the app received those awards because of its comprehensive amount of information and a real easy-to-use format, and I'm gonna walk you through that. So starting on the left, it's circled in red, is both the place name, or where is the traveler visiting, or what are they learning about? It also includes what community it's next to. But the GPS coordinates are in there, and right off the get-go, they kinda seem a little bit mundane, but we enter them manually. And if you've ever done an online map search, you may have found businesses that are in rivers and other things. We can place those right in the doorway of the business. We could put them in a driveway in the case of a farm tour, so people know where they're supposed to turn off. Or if you've got a hiking tour, a jet boat tour, we can put them at the meetup place. So there's a lot of versatility that makes it very easy for travelers to find what it is they're looking for, just based on our GPS coordinates. Now in the middle is a photo gallery, pretty simple, there's three photos available, and you can access them by touching that main photo. And on the right, the user is seeing the top three lines of the up to a thousand-word description of the place, or the heritage site or story. But included in that can be phone numbers, emails, or primary links. So they can access those dial phone number right from that screen. So next, on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see the logo. Now that is a direct link to either a website or a webpage, whatever the primary link for that organization or business is. Now in the middle, there's an area circled that I call the For More Information page. This is where we really eliminate online searches. Not only can we add the website and social media pages of the place being advertised, but we can also add them for local municipal governments, tourism organizations, and even community calendars. Anything that that app user may need to know or wants easy access to for that region. So now that you've seen the point of interest, how does the user find them? Well, the app will open on a near-me menu, so essentially everything within a certain distance of their location will show up on the screen. They can also choose to see a community menu, which is based on information that's flagged with that community name. And as you can see on the menu, they can choose from different categories to refine their search, or they can choose all services, and they're gonna end up with a map similar to the one on the left. Now the real powerhouse of this app is the search function that's driven by keyword searches. So here I've done two examples, one of museums and one of big icons. And you can see that all of those locations show up, as well as the user's location, a little green guy in the middle. By the way, that green guy will turn into various avatars that the user can select. Now here's a few more examples using a keyword. Any unique identifier can be put in as a keyword search. So for walking tours or regional tours, by using a unique identifier, you can market that to customers and essentially create any map that you want to. That is a real powerhouse, it opens up all sorts of opportunities to connect travelers with businesses or regions. Here's a few written examples of keywords. So as an example, let's use events. I could add as a keyword annual events, I could isolate that down to musical events, or by adding the month, I could find August events. Now, if I'm a traveler that's craving a piece of cheesecake, any business that's added cheesecake as a keyword, I'll be able to find them and how close they are to me, just by searching that. That is a powerhouse for both travelers and for marketing specific goods, services, and attractions within Alberta. We've also incorporated ways for the users to share their experience. So if you look in the left-hand middle, there's a little arrow circle. That's a slide-out menu that allows them to share both the app and the place they're visiting on their social media channels. And of course, in the bottom, they can add selfies or comments and share their experience that way with other app users. So now that you've seen our first marketing tool, let's look at how our business is organized. Basically, we need to keep our members' priorities in order, also be self-sufficient, and give back to the community in a socially responsible way. So our first priority is to get that app reloaded as the Traveling on app and under the accounts of the Traveling on Tourism Cooperative. So in order to do that, we're gonna need a hundred paid advertising members. And that really will get us going and ready for the summer 2025 season. Now, even as the app is being reworked and reloaded, we're still gonna be gathering memberships and advertising members. And as those funds increase, we're gonna be gaining that team that does all the necessary tasks to get us ready for next year, next summer. Now we have a lot of goals for this project. One of them is to go across Canada with an app for every province or chapter. So, and then eventually to go internationally. Now every one of those additions brings more focus on the app, and it becomes perhaps the go-to place for travelers across the world. Within the app structure itself, we wanna add automation for our members so that they can add or edit their own sites. In terms of keeping travelers up to date on current events at particular places, this is really, I think, a key. App users themselves will have their own heritage stories or community stories within the province. So we want them to be able to share them with us, and of course, there would be a review process for them because we need to protect the integrity of the data. But also, another feature, and other apps have done it, so we wanna add it to this one, is having the ability to have audio. So for instance, if I was approaching a fur trade location, then the app would notify, I mean, my phone would bang, and it would say, "You're nearing this location, do you wanna hear the story, or would you like directions to get there?" And another feature of the app is we want our app users to be able to create their own itineraries, so they can choose which sites they wanted to see, follow their own little personal map. But at any point during that experience, they could hit the near-me menu and see what other sites are around them. So let's talk the fees. A lifetime membership fee is $25, and it's exactly what it says, it's a one-time fee. Now, right at the moment, there are currently not really many benefits with it, but as that app gets reloaded, we wanna ask our advertising members to offer exclusive discounts and specials to those lifetime members. So essentially, connecting customers with businesses. Now, for the site listing that I showed you earlier, our annual advertising fee is $250. In addition to the site listing, you're gonna get ten keywords. That's very inexpensive advertising. And it gets better. For those with multiple locations, this could be anyone from a corporation with multiple locations to a municipality or First Nation, even a Lions Club with their campgrounds and walking trails. Anyone with multiple places that they want travelers to come to are getting a deep discount. Now, I'm gonna use eleven site listings as an example. So you would purchase your $25 lifetime membership. Your first site listing is $250, the next ten or fifty dollars apiece, making that $500. So for $775, you're getting a year of advertising for your sites. Now, there are pros and cons to this. As a lead organization that's buying the membership, that organization is entitled to the vote, as well as the dividends. In a cooperative, depending on the success of the business, those that are purchasing products from them, in our case, advertising services on the app to start, those are the members that are entitled to any patronage dividend that is available at the end of the year. And now that dividend is distributed is based on a member's vote. Another aspect of a cooperative is that they're supposed to create a business plan which gives back to the community in which it operates. And I think our founding members have found a really great way to do this. And that was the establishment of both the Members Assistance Fund and the Project Assistance Fund. Now in the Members Fund, essentially those nonprofits that, or others that may have really limited budgets and can't afford that $250 annual advertising fee, they can apply for up to $200 assistance towards that fee with no repercussions on their dividend. They'll still get an equal dividend. And for the Project Assistance Fund, this will take a couple of years to roll out and finesse. But essentially, it's a fund that is put in place to assist people with the projects that meet the goals of the cooperative. Now the monies for these two funds comes directly out of our fees. So you'll notice on the left, the lifetime membership fee of $25 is broken down as $20 to business operations, $2 to each of those funds, and then also a dollar for app purchase. So when the founding members of the Traveling on Tourism Cooperative bought the History Check app, they did so on an on-fee basis, so there was no outlay of cash, and the co-op did not start their whole business structure in depth. Now, out of the advertising fee, $200 goes into business operations, $15 goes to a Members Assistance Fund, a minimum of five goes into the Project Assistance Fund, so that if there is surplus or profit at the end of the year, members can vote to add more money into that fund if they choose to, and $30 goes to the app purchase. Now you'll notice at the bottom that our preliminary budget was based on 3,000 advertising members a year for that $250. Now, with that budget, with all of our static charges, plus bringing on a team of people to fully operate this app and market it as it should be, there's still room in that budget for a profit at the end of the year, which opens up the opportunity for dividends. Now our ask today is that you become an advertising member for at least that first site listing. You may have five site listings, you may have a hundred. But if you choose a minimum number of additional sites, that will give you time to get them all together and reloaded before the spring launch, getting ready for the marketing season of 2025. Now the beauty of this is, your annual advertising year does not start until the app is reloaded. So if you purchase those sites now, it gives us the funds to get the app reloaded in the way we want it to, but it also gives you time to get the sites together and look and like how you want them to look before that season comes about. So I really encourage you to take part in this now, because it's a win-win for everybody. So thank you for taking the time to watch the presentation. You can call or text me with any questions you have at the number shown on the screen, and you can do that anytime. Pick up the phone, I don't need an appointment to do so, to answer your call. Or you could email us at the email shown there. But also, we have more in-depth details of our, of our business plan and other aspects of the project on our website at englandca. So again, thank you, and I hope you all have an excellent day.
Okay, anyway, there's our presentation, so it's something we can ponder, especially when it comes to getting, working on our budgets and.
And I've already shared this with Chris from the economic development side and the tourism side, and he said that if councils, after the presentation, if you're interested in more information, he'll dig into it and bring stuff back when you're actually looking at budget and how much it'll cost. And that's our thing specifically for us, and then we can talk about it in October, we're doing budget.
Okay. All right, great. Anyway, thank you, and now move on to Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm here because we've got a speeding problem on Cottonwood Drive. I've been there for forty-plus years, and it's as bad or worse, it's getting busier. This last week had two couriers go through there. There's a big white courier van and a small white courier van. They're both were going way too fast, well over the forty limit. The small one was really going, but he didn't stop at anybody's houses, so couldn't get him heck, he went around the block, just built on two wheels. So, and then about a week ago, a guy went through, and it's mainly coming from the west off of that gravel hill. That's where most of the problem is. It's a few speeding coming from the east, but not that bad. And it's maybe ten percent of the traffic, but that's all it takes to me. And about a week ago, a guy come down that hill with a one-ton duly pulling a empty fifth-wheel flatbed. And he was really moving, and he just kept going straight, eh, down to the east end. Since the first of July, I've had to make three complaints to the RCMP. And I'm having a meeting with them on Wednesday. And I've done a little bit of research. There's speed bumps, there's speed humps. A speed bump is the short little one, and it's rough, you hit it. It's designed to bring traffic down to five to ten mile an hour. A speed hump is bigger, and it's designed to bring traffic down to fifteen to thirty miles an hour and keep the flow going, non-stop sign, non-stop, okay? We need something there. I checked out prices, there's quite a few companies make these things out of recycled tires. And you can buy a fairly decent, we need about twenty-seven feet. And they come in sections, six foot, seven foot, nine foot. For between $1,000 and $2,000, you can get twenty-seven feet of portable speed bump. See if it works. There's probably other places in town that they could be beneficial, for example, both ends of the swimming pool. Just a thought. Doesn't stop traffic, but it makes them think. They're brightly colored, you see it, you slow down. If you're really speeding, you're gonna do some damage to your vehicle, like the ten or fifteen percent I'm worried about. If you're not speeding, you go over them quite easily, but the speed hump at Little Bow Park, when you're leaving the park, okay? Although that one's paved and poured in, but between $1,000 and $2,000 will buy you a speed bump, a good one. You can get a cheap one for about $600. But we need to do something. What I'd like to see is a couple of counselors make some kind of little committee, a couple of meetings, and I can show you the values and stuff, because I don't want this to take another six months, or even one month, if it's possible. About maybe week and a half ago, Sunday morning, there's one individual I'm having some trouble with. He flying through there, coming from the east, Sunday night, in a car. And the next morning at 9:30 in the morning, he come back through with a half-ton, flying the other way. And that morning, I had three grandkids there, two five-year-old twins and a three-and-a-half-year-old. They weren't, they weren't near the road, but quite often they are. And it's, again, there's no alleys, it's just street parking. And Andre's got a vehicle or two across the street, and there's somebody in front of mine. That's a pretty narrow thing for somebody to come flying through there, especially in a one-ton with a big flatbed. It's no, you're gonna stop. So, that's where we're at.
Where do you think, where do you think the best place for this, if the council decided on that? What are you thinking, coming on the gravel, would we put the hump, or just on?
No, I would suggest the bottom of the gravel on the pavement, okay? And you maybe don't even need twenty-seven feet, if brightly colored, I don't know, twenty-four feet might do it, I don't know. They might try to go around, but quite often there's a car park that Jared's across the street, so they can't really go around it.
So when you looked into these things, do you have to pin them, like?
You can, but you don't have to.
Okay.
And they can be moved.
So if you don't pin them though, if somebody hits them, they're gonna go all over the place?
I don't think so. They're pretty flat, that you, yeah. Look on the internet, there's a company called Barco. B-A-R-K-O. And they make all kinds of.
Yep.
Somebody told me you can buy them at Lowe's and Home Depot, and I stocked at both of those places to try to get a pitcher and stuff for you, but couldn't find them, I think you have to order them again or something.
Okay.
But if you, I would, if a couple of counselors would make a committee or something, one or two meetings, and we could have this done, and I'd get off the cases. But I need something done there.
My concern with the movable speed bump would be like snow in the winter, and just running greater speed, there's gonna wreck it.
In the winter, it's not as bad, though. The people don't tend to come down, flying down there like they do in the summertime. And remove it in the winter.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we'll take it into advisement and see what we can do from here, so thank you very much.
Okay, I hope it won't take months and months.
It wasn't an official request made in writing before, so it's not even on our agenda for tonight. So it won't be until at least next month's meeting, so. Which day?
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth, so.
Okay, what about forming a committee so we can have a meeting or two?
Again, there was no, I mean, it, all it just says, I will be attending the council meeting Monday, September twenty-third. We assumed what it was for, but again, nothing on that, so it's not even been presented on the council agenda for tonight, so.
And the reason there wasn't anything on it, because I thought there'd be some kind of thing saying that, no, it doesn't apply, it's your, it's your raised crosswalk again.
Yeah, and again, nothing official, so we appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to council, but yeah, it's not on the agenda for tonight at all.
If you're just coming in between meetings and then before, we decide our next agenda, you can work with Kim, just.
Oh, no, I can't work with Kim, I have a problem with your administrator and your mayor, by the way. We have some fast history, so that's why I'd like to work with counselors.
Well, we need an official, or on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll have that tomorrow.
So I would sort of like what Will was saying, if we do a formal request, and it has to be sent to Kemp to be put onto the agenda, and then we can actually have an official conversation about possibly the purchase of the humps at the next council meeting to see if it's, if we can.
Well, you've been talking to our engineers and saying, hey, what's the best way to make people slow down here?
Well, that's kind of going around and around, Will. We'll be going around for months if we do that. I think that was looked after when you were talking about that raised crosswalk. This thing doesn't have any drainage problems, you don't need your engineer, you just go do it. If it doesn't work, or it's not working, remove it.
Cool. I'm kind of open to the concept, whether we agree to put it there or not. Like economically more feasible than anything else that's ever come up. And Bob does make a good point, it could be an option on Main Street too.
I'm willing to go buy this thing on my own and put it there. If it doesn't work, take it away.
We hope that you don't, because of liability issues and.
Yeah, I understand.
And so we hope that you don't do that, Bob. I mean, you know, if you were willing to work with us, but it doesn't sound like you're interested in doing the proper procedure.
I sure am. I sure am, and that was the first time. And your administrator was aware that the main concern was the speeding, not necessarily a raised cross.
Yeah, and we have that issue all over town, and we, we try and deal with it as we can with the, our local police and our bylaw and the peace officers in our community. And, you know, there's concerns raised all over the community, and that's partly why we lowered the speed limit to forty. And, you know, we haven't seen, haven't had an opportunity to see if it's gonna work or it's not. And so there are other calming methods to traffic controls that are tried in other municipalities. And there's concerns and questions on both sides, and I think it needs to be vetted properly, and.
That's why I wanna deal with a couple of counselors.
Yes, but, but again, you know, we still deal through administration, administration's the one that's.
Fine in the end, but I bet, I do it.
Okay, well, thank you very much, is there any other questions for Bob?
Would you like to have any, like, meet with any of the counselors to help write up the proposal to send to him? And he can, and he can kind of go through the proposal and make sure that it's, you know, appropriate for on the agenda, with that help?
Sure. Yeah, I'm willing to meet with any counselor. Try to get this put to bed. I need something there before I got a dead grandkid, I'm not gonna be very.
Well, we all, we all have grandkids that are concerned.
Yeah, you know, you're the one, you're the one who means it.
You bet, I know, I, I can, I'll bet you there's more traffic goes by my house at two o'clock in the morning that goes by your whole house the whole day.
Possible?
Possible, it is, true.
Come sit on my, come sit on my.
I sat, I sat up there for half a day.
There.
At the top.
And?
And, that, that day that I sat for half a day, there was probably twenty-five vehicles went by, that's it.
And how fast?
I can tell you, I don't have a radar gun, I mean, same thing on Main Street. I can tell you when they go by, it sounds like they're traveling faster than, I don't have a radar gun.
That's common, you guys put a couple of counselors together, and I'd like to get this settled.
Well, we'll discuss it another time when, when the.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, we'll move on, correspondence. Line one, Lions Club's request. Five-one, Lions Club's request.
So we received this letter from the Lions Club. Uh, it's, uh, didn't have a bunch of background, but we do know that, that this summer that they had, they had water out. It sounds like the, the request is gonna come more often. Uh, we didn't get a chance, uh, if we could have, we would have, uh, had Stu talk to the club. There is a couple of different options there. The curb stop that's currently being used is not great, it's very two feet into the alley. But there is a curb stop that serves one of the old buildings that was on the front side of that property, that may be better suited for, for that. Really with this information, they're basically bringing it to council's attention, you know, they don't want a full-on utility bill, and, and set up an account, all that sort of thing. Be more of a temporary water service, very similar to what we do with, uh, communities and little groups like that. And so council can receive this for information, and, uh, we'll talk to Stu and, uh, and get, uh, costs on what it would cost to do a temporary water service.
Okay, any thoughts, questions?
I think it's a good idea.
Do you need a motion? I don't think so, not at this point. But I think what we'll do is we'll get everything put together. We'll, uh, we have an agreement with, uh, the Lions Club that council has passed four projects like this at the pool, similar to that, to work with Stu, and then if it, uh, comes outside that scope, like, you know, the one is trenching, water lines and all those things, that Stu will bring it back for council approval. But if it's simple as us fixing a curb stop and, and surfacing into the gravel, and the club's gonna take care of the rest, they can, we can figure that out, because one of the things Stu mentioned is the sidewalk block where the current curb stop is, uh, is cracked. It looks like it needs replacing anyway, so it could probably be done at the same time, so. Just working all those deep wells out, and if it goes beyond the scope of where Stu thinks it needs to come back to council for approval, um, to bring that back, if, if you're ready.
Okay. There's no further information. Will, somebody wish to file the correspondence? Will? Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none. Call question was in favor. That's carried. Okay, moving on to the next one, which is cash statement. Any questions on cash statement?
Looks like we're, uh, cashless, we should be. We're in an excellent position, yes.
Okay, somebody wish to move it? Richard?
You're next.
Okay, any discussion on Mr. Richard's motion? Hearing none. Call question was in favor. That's carried. Okay, moving on to year-to-date.
The only thing that worth noting is, uh, under recreation, you'll see a significant increase in revenue, and that was based on, uh, the money coming in for the sports courts, so.
On what, sorry?
For the sports courts, the money that comes in, we have to run through the budget, so. Yeah, well, we will make the adjustments, uh, once we de-vega it.
And, and on FCS S, I assume that income revenue changed because of champion coming on?
Because of the addition, yeah.
And so that's why the expenses went up too, I assume?
That's right.
This golf course only have one more year?
Uh, March of twenty twenty-five, right?
So, less.
Uh, we, uh, that one, unlike our, uh, unlike ones we borrow from Alberta Capital Finance, those are twice a year. The golf course loan, we actually pay them.
Oh, it's, oh, I see.
Yeah, and it significantly did reduce the amortization on it, so, uh, I believe March of twenty twenty-five is the last payment.
Okay, um, all right, any further discussion on the year-to-date? If not, somebody wish to, Cole, sorry?
I'll file it. Let's present it, please.
Okay, okay. Cole moves it. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none. Call question was in favor. Others, same, none, it's carried, obviously. Okay, policy number seven-one, and, uh, or, I'm sorry, sorry, number seven-one, policy PU zero-six municipal campground amendment.
So as councillors were reading through the report, uh, there's been a significant change in the last few years on use in the campground, and one of the things that, uh, we've been, uh, working at, uh, through Public Works and Bylaw is how to address some of that, uh, mostly, you know, no hot water in there, so there isn't a real good place to shower, those sort of things, and we've recently run into folks staying in tents and that, and running extension, extension courts all over the place, uh, taking power from the, uh, the current buildings that are there. And so one of the things that we looked at is, uh, back to the intended use of that when that campground was created for folks traveling on the highway that didn't necessarily need to go into a full-service campground. They're there for two days while visiting somebody in town, stopping at the hospital, or traveling, uh, back and forth, so. Through that conversation, uh, we looked at how to bring that back, and I know that conversation has been here before, uh, the reason being is, you know, we did the three consecutive nights, and people were taking advantage of that by staying three consecutive nights, leaving for a night, and then coming back for three more nights, and so that they wouldn't have to pay. And so, uh, a few years ago, we did a, uh, an amendment that added it to, within a six-month period, with the idea that, you know, say somebody from Edmonton traveling down south for the winter, they can stop and all could spend the night, go spend the winter down south, and on their way home, they could do the same thing, and that stay in town, sarcasm, you know, purchasing fuel and, and, you know, stopping at a restaurant, those sort of things. So with the, the recent changes in, uh, the way, uh, folks are using the campground, uh, we thought of simple policy amendment to bring it in line uh, with our Virginia Mitchell Park as well, uh, stating, because our, uh, in the first statement that we are asking for the amendment on, uh, the access to public washrooms and dump station were weather permitting. Now, campground's open year-round because, of course, it's not fenced, we don't lock it, uh, but we always winterize that building, the same as we do, uh, with the winterization of the Virginia Mitchell when we close it. So, and those dates on that policy are from May till September thirtieth. So we've, uh, added those dates to the first line, and then down on the subsequent, after the free, after what it's intended for, those three free nights, you can stay in the campground for four consecutive nights, uh, will be established under the current rates and fees by law, which you do, it's fifteen dollars a night to stay, and shall not exceed fourteen days, so that keeps that extended stay, because nobody in a tent or stopping in a car or even a motorhome, uh, fully enclosed, uh, can stay self-sustained for more than about two weeks before needing to dump water, uh, and, uh, dump the septic tank, those sort of things. So we looked at the fourteen consecutive days, so it still allows it for being a little bit, but more for the bigger units, those sort of things. And then shall, uh, only be permitted from May first to, uh, uh, September thirtieth, and that corresponds with having our guys there that check the campground and, and, uh, do the cleaning and that sort of thing. They also will be in the arena, uh, at the end of this month, they've already started, but, uh, that way, with this change in the policy, no longer have the, you can't stay there for more than the three days outside the, the shoulder season, and, uh, we don't have to worry about collecting the money, registering, those sort of things. We can just take the free registrations, document it for their six months, and it's done.
This is just the camp one.
That's just, just the campground at the, uh, municipal campground beside the, the hospital.
I, I like it. It, um, still gives the, kind of the welcoming for a night or two or three, but if it's being abused, there's a cost to it, there's, you know, a timeline attached to it, because I like the cost attached to it, because, you know, obviously it costs money to maintain and clean, right, so I, I like it.
Okay, Barbara?
Um, I just have a question. So, um, I know that it's the fourteen days, um, you know, um, shall not exceed fourteen days and, uh, the maximum length of stay, um, so if we have um, individuals, um, in the community that are staying there for fourteen days, they, they can't leave for a night and then come back?
No, because it still falls in within that six-month period. Only one time within six, uh, six months.
Wanted to clarify that that was for sure.
One of the things that helped us put this together, and, uh, to be completely honest, uh, when we first started talking about this, the, the the consecutive days, we started way up at ninety, you know, and, and talked that all the way down to where we are now, at the fourteen, based on the use of a, a motorhome or a trailer. And the reason being that allowed us to do that is we've also expanded the other campground, the overflow, which is essentially the same thing, and in more of a controlled environment that gets closed off at the end of the season and, and that sort of thing. So as we move forward and we look at, uh, expanding campgrounds and those sort of things, hopefully this campground goes back to that stop and go as it, as it should be.
Yeah.
Will?
I think the entire point is this is not short-term living. Yeah, for you. This is overnight visitors, overnighters, people coming down to visit, kind of the minister, that sort of thing, so I think this is a good, good definition of what it is.
Okay, cool.
I agree. I've last, I haven't been on the public ballot lately, but when I have been, I've been asked a lot about some tents that have been there. Yeah. And how that's being used and what an ice word it is and everything, and, you know, you don't want to be, um, I, I don't know what the word is, but cold-hearted, but, yeah, that's the word. There is, obviously, it's obviously being taken advantage of, so. I think this kind of helps mitigate that.
Yeah, and theoretically with us being able to shut the showers, the washroom facilities down on September thirtieth is an asset, because otherwise, I mean, some years, October, like you said, earlier, is a beautiful month, but yet on the other hand, it, it's not heated, so there's a liability and, and a cost factor to the municipality if it freezes up and, and does major damage, so.
Um, I just have one question. Um, if, uh, we make this motion, um, would it be possible for you to share this information possibly with FCS S, so the individuals who may not be currently housed, who may live in there, could make arrangements prior to the end of the month because it is a long weekend?
Yes, yeah, so part of this is we'll make sure that it's hosted there, and there, and our bylaw officer has been working with FCS S on the current, on the current residents.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make the recommendation that council approve the amendments to policy PU zero-six. We welcome municipal campground as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none. Call person was in favor. Closed. Seeing none, it's carried, you know, it's. Okay, moving on to Vulcan County's APC grant support request.
So I'm not sure if council's had much experience with the ACP. Uh, it's the Alberta Partnership Grant, uh, they, there's, uh, grant funding available and communities get together and work on similar projects. We've taken part in it in the past, we've hosted it in the past. Uh, currently, we aren't hosting or supporting any of the ACP grants. We've got some letters of support for one, say why that we did, but we're not supporting. And so the county is looking at doing a county-wide, uh, stormwater, uh, management, and there's some benefits in that, because of course we have uh, three points of entry into the county with our stormwater, and, uh, again, the timing on it, the deadline is October first. We're one of the few municipalities inside the county from their meeting to, uh, the end of the month that ha, we're having a meeting, so they called and asked if we'd be willing to. And I looked into it, we're not, we're not sponsoring anything else, we, there's no financial commitment, and, uh, we truly stand to gain, if we can share that information with our engineers, when we do our stormwater planning, so. It was a pretty straightforward request. County council approved it on Wednesday, uh, put in the application, as long as we look to support it.
Richard? I'll make the recommendation. Vulcan County's managing partner submission. A twenty-four, twenty-five Alberta Community Partnership Grant application and support a regional stormwater strategy project.
And you need to include, there is no.
No matching grant, no matching contribution required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Richard's motion?
Yeah, okay.
Hearing none. Call question was in favor. Closed. Seeing none, it's carried, you know, it's. Okay, moving on to twenty-twenty-four Family and Community Support Services Association of Alberta's conference. Judy's request.
Councillor Anderson asked me to bring this forward. Uh, she has attended this in the past, would like to again, uh, the registration, uh, is being done through the FCS S, and, uh, it's worth noting that they are, uh, sharing costs on, uh, sharing room as well, to keep the costs down, so. But to reverse for the conference, we do need a motion from the council.
Cool.
I'd like to make the recommendation that council authorize Councillor Sanderson to attend the two thousand twenty-four Family and Community Support Services Association of Alberta Conference in Edmonton, and that the related expenses be remunerated, remunerated, uh, per policy A-dash- twelve.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none. Call question was in favor. Closed. That's carried. Okay, moving on to community reports. We have five of them there. Any comments on the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council? I know that, that you guys were talking about changing the name, but.
Very long.
Okay, this one's June twentieth, and Barbara's probably talked about it a couple of times since then, but, um, the next one is, uh, Community, the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation, June twenty-sixth meeting. Okay, hearing none. Move on to the draft minutes of September the tenth for MPC. Okay, no questions on that one. The next one's library on September seventeenth. Okay, nothing on that one. Move on to the flying club, September the seventeenth. Okay, no questions on any of those. Bob?
We have the motion to accept the councillors' reports, or the, uh, committee reports, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Bob's moved this. Any discussion on Bob's motion? Hearing none. Call the question was in favor. Closed. Seeing none, it's carried, you know, it's. Okay, moving on to verbal councillor reports. Councillor Anderson.
Uh, so just seeing, uh, I attended the MPC meeting on September tenth, and, uh, we approved two secondary suite applications. Uh, later in the day, uh, we will be attracting retention committee meeting, uh, Tom was there as well. I attended via Zoom, just because I was packing and coughing. I didn't think the hospital was a good place to complete that day, uh, and then on the, uh, forgive me, on September seventeenth, I attended the flying club meeting, and just a report from the flying breakfast. Uh, they, they were pretty happy with how things went. They figured they had about eighteen aircraft that came to the flying breakfast. Over two hundred people attended, and Stars was on site, and they themselves, uh, figured they raised about eight hundred dollars when they were on site, so they were pretty happy with that. And, uh, one question, uh, was gonna ask. When the crop dusters come into town and use the facility, does the town get a copy of insurance? Proof of insurance of the crop dusters in case they do a boo-boo?
We used to when we did a lease agreement, but not anymore.
Okay.
Because that's, falls under the operations.
So that's, that's the flying club that we need to be with, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Bob? If not, thank you. Councillor Devoe?
We really haven't had any other meetings, um, in the last time, so, uh, just, um, comments about, uh, how the roads were looking good, the three ones, and the question was, uh, what do we do in the other ones? I just said, well, that takes money, because we have to dig the infrastructure below it.
I said, well, that takes money because we have to dig the infrastructure below it, so that was about it. But all in all, it seems like they had good comments about the town and that, so yeah, everything's good.
Okay, any questions for Richard? If not, thank you, councillor Smith.
I also didn't have any meetings between last meeting and this one. Wednesday I have a press meeting. And I also have a call force meeting at the exact same time, so the jury can't make either. So we need more counsel representation at the call force meeting. That's it.
Okay, any questions for Will? Okay, not, thank you, councillor Coffey.
Um, September eleventh, um, I had the combined meeting with Clarice Young and the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council. And we are changing our name. We have one more strategic planning kind of coming up where we're going to solidify that. So it'd be hopefully a shorter acronym. So I did have that. And then September seventeenth, I had a library board meeting. September twentieth, I did, uh, make it back in time to attend the Futureville, which also, uh, there were other individuals that were there as well. Um, and then I will attend the Health and Wellness Foundation via Zoom this Wednesday. I will be at the town for the help for municipalities. And of course, informally, I did have, um, Robert Scher drop by my workplace to cover the speed hunts. And I did mention it to Kim, so very briefly on Friday. So that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? Not, move on to Cole.
I have not had any meetings, I've got, uh, it sounds like we have a water commission meeting sometime.
Yeah, it's yet to be determined yet, I think.
Yeah, and I have a Southscro meeting coming up. Hopefully I can attend on the third. Would not have, have nothing else to add.
Okay, any questions for Cole? Not, Judy did write one for her report, so go ahead.
Verbally go through it if you have very quickly. On September tenth, she had an MPC meeting, asked for Will's report. Uh, September twelfth, uh, they had the victim services farewell supper. All RCFP and their families attended except for one who had a prior engagement. All advocates and two program managers plus four family members and four board members attended. Supper was excellent, lots of visiting, follow-up with the competitive big goal, which was fast and fun. And it was great to get together and show appreciation for all the work that's been done as the team over the past twenty-four years. On September twenty-fourth, she attended the Pitcher Buke Town Hall meeting, which was attended by Danielle Smith and Joseph Shaw. The premier started out by advising the crowd of what the ABC has completed to date. And there was a Q and A, uh, some very interesting topics came up. I spoke about FCSS and the struggles in small towns with so many will become homeless in our communities now. Premier was unaware of where there was homeless people in our community. He took note of that, agreed to talk to our MLA after about FCSS. And he took note of some needs. September nineteenth, she attended FCSS meeting. They had ten of the board, uh, we had ten of the board, including our director in attendance, which is the most for a long time. It's good to have Champion's voice at the table. They had two of the three new members at large. Home support outreach grant through, has the aging has been extended to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, which is great news. Uh, new policy twenty-seven was approved for retention and disposal of records. July and August was extremely busy in the FCSS office with more and more people needing assistance. September nineteenth, they also had their food bank meeting. But a budget overview was presented for twenty twenty-five, lots of discussion on this. Food bank use has gone up under twenty percent since last year in the summer. There is some concern on the numbers will come through in the normal, uh, this normally busiest month of December. The Canets made a five thousand dollar casino donation to the food bank to help with putting food on the shelves. So thankful to the Canets. A fundraising letter, uh, is going out to businesses, groups, individuals, giving them sponsorship opportunities and a charitable receipt available for any financial donation over twenty dollars. Uh, to be accredited under the Food Bank of Canada, we have to follow with their standards of excellence and policies and procedures in place. Angie, the food bank manager, has struggled on a massive pro- on this massive project and the board will assist in areas that they can, such as governance. Uh, this has to be completed by March of twenty twenty-five. They had a closed session from six fifty-one, moved out at seven fifteen. No motions were made, information only. And they've had a standard, we've had a standard of excellence grant approved in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars to cover such things as stainless steel countertops, food safe containers, and a ramp into the food bank. September tenth, twentieth, she attended the Futureview presentation, good in, uh, interactive conversation. And then September tw- twenty-third, uh, the Vulcan Regional Victim Services meeting at nine o'clock at Fire Hall. This meeting was mainly concerning financial and wishing our two program managers good luck moving forward in their new positions. We had made a couple of motions concerning money. One was to give to sell the RAV four to the food bank with some monies for maintaining insurance registration, et cetera. Next meeting, we will have a list of the other suggestions, go through the balance of what's left, ensuring that we have some money in the account to get us through to the completion of the reporting in the new year and disperse the rest of the funds. I hope it's not a question, because I may not be prepared.
It's just to add that, um, along with RAV, uh, we did make a motion to donate eleven thousand dollars for the vehicle to help them for the next two years. And the other monies, we've had lots of different suggestions on uses. And we've kind of made a list of those and then we'll deal with them at our, hopefully, our very last one in October. So hopefully.
I know, that wasn't a question.
That's great, but.
It was really good of her to write that one for me.
Judy supplied that and I apologize that I jumped her position there and went right on, but. Anyway, I guess can't be any questions for Judy. For me, um, I was at the recruitment and retention. They've got another doctor that is proposing to come in in the spring. Might be closer to summertime, I think it was, because of their kids are in school and so they're, they're moving. But it sounds like they're committed to come to the community. I had three say wow meetings, one on the thirteenth, sixteenth, and the eighteenth, to deal with some more questions with the three vendors. Really, it only turned out to be two of the vendors, the third vendor can't make them until sometime in October. And then that kind of a meeting to discuss all the methods and what we need to propose to the, to the board. We were supposed to have a budget meeting with the Solid Waste last Thursday night, but it was postponed because the date was put into place to accommodate a municipality, but administration felt that they were never going to get their information together in time to put in for the budget, being that, um, they're way a bit in the shortstop right now, so, um, the budget isn't in place or the preliminary budget isn't in place yet. So Dick's still anticipating that we're not going to see a ton of change unless something happens with the trucking and the tipage, so we're kind of waiting on that. I did too attend the Futureville or Vulcanville demonstration. La was there, Barbara was there, Judy was there, Kim was there, Angie Kim's daughter. And so it was, it was interesting to, to hear Angie's, you know, proposals and perspectives. So hopefully they'll be able to move forward with their, with their project by the, you know, the deadline, but they've gone. Some questions came up and Kim was kind enough to answer a couple of them before some of the people that were there. And I'm sure there'll be other questions that'll come up as, as the project progresses and moves forward. And that's pretty well it for me for since the last meeting, so unless you guys got some questions.
What was the term? I get that many great problems.
I think it's probably thirty. Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't do a good count, but yeah, there was a couple that I didn't know who they were. And there was a couple that I was, you know, impressed to see that they showed up, so, um, so.
Good mix of young and old as well.
Yeah, yeah, there was quite a, quite a variety in age group, um, which was nice to see. And some of the questions came, um, and, and, you know, some, some of the concerns and questions on, on, you know, how it's going to progress and move forward and, and, um, unfortunately, I think some of them don't understand the, the total process of how things go and, and some of them, so appreciate. Yeah, well, Rita, Rita was there too, um, from the town too, so she was able to answer a couple of questions or throw some comments in there. Anything else? Okay, if not, somebody wish to move the councilverse? Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Okay, if not, hearing none, we'll call the question in favor. Opposed, seeing none, call the question is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the action list, as you can see, I'll answer Kim's question on it, but.
Unless there's any questions, all the things that are done, but the very first one, that'll be there for a while. Yeah, we were able to accomplish everything from the last meeting.
Will we ever be able to remove that?
We can.
Eventually, you can ask me to take it off of the list if there is.
And then they can bring it back. I mean, we're hoping that something will happen with it, but it doesn't really sound like. You know, I mean, unfortunately too, they, they have lost somebody that they were interested in getting them to build the, this.
The, the actual statue itself.
The act, so, you know, it's, which creates another wrinkle in the.
And based on this and the timeline of it, uh, say election time might be a good time to ask me to take it off the list because that would have been five years and then you had two through two councils, so.
And, and that doesn't mean that somebody else can't bring it back. I mean, it's, and, and sometimes we leave them on there just to kind of spark that interest and say, is there something out there that, where we can get it fulfilled and removed that way, but, but anyway.
Right now, it's got a motion of books that bring that plan back, so it's, it's in their hands and they could come back tomorrow with the plan, so. And you don't have to revisit it, if we take it off, you'll have to revisit it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, if you don't write it down and see it every meeting, forget about it.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay, if not, move on to the CAO's report.
Uh, you all had a chance to read your reports, I'll just quickly go through it. Then did the second response for the race crosswalk, obviously we could do another one as well. Hoping to get some more information for the next meeting. CMA Plus has worked on the final completion certificate for the fairways. So the important part of that is, is they've done the final list with the bashful and of course that's when the developer, when they do find they get the FCCs, that's when the town accepts responsibility for the roads and those sort of things. So we're getting really close to the, being, taking the town having responsibility for the road on, on fairways. They did their inspection at the end of last week and provided them some support with that. And it sounded like it went for a while, so.
Without them taking the whole fairways.
No, just, just up to the last house that was developed there, yeah, no. Because of the phasing of that development plan. And so I do quite a bit of research on cost of living and that, obviously for the union negotiations. They haven't set up the meeting yet, but I've prepared the majority of, uh, material that I need to go forward. Worked with ORSC and Benchmark, uh, we had an assessment appeal that came through. It's a fairly large corporation working on behalf and it's one, it's one of the companies that, that that's all they do is appeal assessments. And once they had a conversation with Ryan, which most people folks do, Ryan explained our position where we're at, those sort of things. And they're actually talking about possibly withdrawing their application now. So we're still just waiting to hear back on that, so. And real estate listings, uh, did the extensions with, uh, for all the town lineups, we've got those now back up to date and, uh, Barbara made a comment about the regional response to Elder Abuse Council. I have typed that because I sent it out to all of the CAOs, uh, based on the motion that the council made. It's great that they're talking about doing the name, but I've typed that thing so many times to so many people in the last little while that it might be too late to change it now. But yes, no, so it's gone out to all of them. Uh, we're hoping to have a conversation at the communications meeting in October, but it's not something like a communications meeting, I, I think the emergency management is, but not a hundred percent sure, uh, feedback from some of the CAOs is, there wasn't going to be a whole bunch of people there. We'll keep you informed, but. And yeah, unless there's any other questions, uh, dealing with some unsightly's, obviously Channing was able to take some all day, so he sent over media orders and we'll get back, the deadline will be done, so we'll be able to actually bring somebody in to, to deal with those if they haven't dealt with. We got the computers updated on September eleventh to twelfth, went relatively painlessly. We have, are just dealing with a few issues and it's mostly on, uh, changing from Windows ten to eleven and compatibility with some of the software. Put it in perspective, uh, Wanda, inside our, our Great Plains, our accounting software, she struggled with reports printing. As soon as they upgraded, her reports all went the way they should. Teresa, on the other hand, who has done the same for her reporting and printing since the beginning of time, did the update and now her printing doesn't work as well. So we're working with Great Plains to get that remedied and they do have been really help, uh, really helping us as well, so. Answered the phone call and I think we've, we're down to at least one phone call a day now to him, so. And he was on site for two days and was able to do all the changes. Didn't find anything inside of our system with the upgrades. Uh, very pleased with where we're sitting now, uh, as far as our servers and that sort of thing. And is, uh, very pleased that, uh, the council is considering, rather than waiting the whole five years, trying to do a little bit every year is probably going to be, we're, the amount of equipment we have is probably a good, a good fit to do it thoroughly, so. Then I met with Pristine Homes, did a developer review onsite, drove around out there and, uh, again, reviewed options and hopefully sparks some interest in looking forward on some projects in there, so.
Okay, any questions for Kim? If not, somebody wish to move the administration first? Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call questions in favor. Opposed. Okay, if you have more motion, Will.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, we'll call questions in favor. If you are officially adjourned, thank you.